Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November 29, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the banner of the United States of America, we stand on the occasion of our God, in his presence, with all his wisdom and power.
Thank you very much. There is nothing under general this evening. Brings us to item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no committee correspondents, moving on to item six, Public Comment. Those members wishing to speak to the council, please come forward and be heard. State your name and address for the record. Up first on the sign up sheet was Don Pylon. Feel free to remove your mask to speak into the microphone, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Don Pylon from Dillon Haven Circle. I'd like to address item, I believe it's nine B, under Action Items. I understand that this agenda item has been before the council and the Planning Board. You've massaged this, you've taken it, juggled it, shoveled it, and I know that this has been looked at from many, many angles. I've addressed this before this committee, maybe not this council, but the council before. And the issue I have is the I-2 zone, specifically on the Industrial Park Road. I know the Planning Board, I've addressed this with the Planning Board. The issue is, when we look at putting these zoning codes in place, and when we look at the, for example, the dispensaries in the I-2 zone, that's great, but we don't look at the needs of the community and the needs of that area. Forget the I-2 zone for a moment, but the travel needs. Look at who's coming and going on the Industrial Park Road. There is a need. My office is right on the corner of Industrial Park Road and North Street. And many a times when I've been in the office, the people in my office have said, geez, I wish I could run out and get a sandwich. I wish I could run out and get a cup of coffee. I wish I could run down the street and get something to eat. There is nothing. We're a desert out there. And I'm just speaking for my group of people. There are hundreds of people in the industrial park that have to run out, they maybe have a half hour or an hour to get something to eat. So what do they do? They hop in their car, they run down Route One. They have to wait in line to get something to eat, and then they run back to their office or wherever they work, and they only have maybe 15, 20 minutes left to eat. We need food out there, guys and gals. So it's not permitted. You can have something to eat, but in today's world where everything is, we have to mask up and we can't go necessarily into an establishment, we need the ability to have a drive-through window out there. It's not a permitted use. So as we go forward, I wish that the Planning Board, and the council for that matter, would really not just look at today's needs, and today's needs are, we need this today, but look at what's the future needs. And the future needs are today's needs. We need eating establishments out there. Can you imagine somebody getting off the road after three hours driving up from Hartford, Connecticut, going to Saco or going out to Hollis or going somewhere, and they need gas for their car? There's not even a gas station out here. So just think more broadly perhaps, and think about our needs today. Give us some food out there. Give us the ability to have a drive-through window, because no one's going into restaurants to get food. Everything is, because of COVID, we need drive-through windows, the accessibility of drive-through windows today. So that's my pitch, and again, please think not just here, not just today, but out here. Okay? Thanks a lot.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard. Moving on from Public Comment. There's no minutes to approve, there are no consent items. Brings us to item nine, Action Items. Item A on page two in the packet is one reading Ecology School Business Partnership Initiative for a left-turn lane. That is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The River Bend Farm Project Site Plan Review for the Ecology School at 184 Simpson Road included a condition that the applicant will implement solutions as noted in the traffic impact study, and that the applicant will work with the city and the main DOT to design and construct a left-turn treatment as warranted at the Simpson-Bunksted Road intersection. Business Partner Initiative, BPI, funding will cover the cost of this project, and will consist of 50% funding from DOT, 25% from the Ecology School, and 25% from the city. Bead ordered the city council authorize the city administrator, Brian Kenrath, to begin the BPI project based on the Ecology School's Contract Zone Agreement and the information shared with the council on November 22, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Counselor Hatch, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Hatch.
I brought this up at the presentation at the last meeting. I'm just a little concerned or would like to talk about whether or not this vote is going to commit us to 25% of an amount that I'm not sure we know what it is.
City Administrator Kenrath.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I don't think it necessarily commits us, but I would before we get maybe too deep into questions. We do have two city staff people here who also have some information and views to share with the council, and I think we'll also touch on your question initially, Counselor Hatch, and maybe some others before we get into some of the Q and As. So I don't know if Director Fox or Director Clovet, if both of you would like to come up on separate terms, but I think you both expressed to me that you have relevant information to share with the council before they go forward.
I can make a few comments on behalf of department staff now, or if you'd like to discuss it, and I'll be available. So a week ago, you got a presentation from the Ecology School on what they're doing with their new campus, the programs, and also, at the end of that presentation was a request that the city participate in constructing the Route 112 left-turn lane onto Simpson Road. Trying to give you some background, and I'm not a member of the Planning Department, but I have been with Public Works throughout this process. Our city engineer has attended pretty much all of the relevant meetings, and a lot of the planning staff have gone through a lot of changes. So I just want to offer a few things so that you can make an informed decision on whether or not the city chooses to move forward with funding this off-site improvement of the Ecology School. So a couple of general things before we get into the timeline of the actual project that was approved back in 2018. In general, projects that go to the Planning Board, if there is a city improvement on a city road or state road that is in line and planned for, you know, pretty much any time in the coming decade or years, and it's been shown in a traffic study that the city's working towards it, the Planning Board may approve a project in the vicinity of it and ask them to contribute funds as a condition of approval towards this off-site improvement. So that's one avenue that typically goes. The other one would be that a development is going in off of a road, and an off-site improvement is warranted based on that development, and the Planning Board makes a condition of approval that says, you shall do this as part of your project. What has been stated or talked about regarding this project is somewhere in between, and I would say, and it's based on the Condition of Approval Number Nine, that states the applicant will work with the city of Saco and the main Department of Transportation. I do not think that anyone that drafted or voted on that improvement with that language intended for "work with" to mean enter a cost-share agreement. The Planning Board can't allocate the money that you allocate in the budget. There's not a, that's not part of the process. The former planner certainly did not intend that "work with" meant that "work with" was signing the city up to pay for this off-site improvement. So I think you need to understand, there was no obligation, there was no intent, there was no board or city staff member that has told this applicant that the city was going to bring money to the table to put towards this off-site improvement. So I've confirmed with every city staff member that, I've been in a number of meetings dating back to 2019, 2020, where we stated that this is an improvement of the contract zone, the Ecology School, and their approval through the Planning Board. This is not a city initiative. The city, in the next 10 or 20 years, was not going to install a turn lane to Simpson Road, given the character of the area and the uses. It was not on the city's Route 112 traffic improvement plans. Unlike things like the Jenkins Road traffic signal that we do not have funded yet, there was a public meeting just a week ago where there were 50 very vocal Saco residents that want that traffic signal in yesterday. They want it done already. They point to the safety issues and the pending DOT, MTA interchange project. So that would be a Route 112 improvement that the city is planning on doing, doesn't have the funding together for, and would ask projects in the vicinity to contribute to. So just to sort of draw the distinction along Route 112 and where the city's priorities have been. So I take the statement "work with," as I believe the Planning Board did at the time, and I believe every city staff member has since day one, just like if there was a project along the Saco River and someone said, "Work with the Saco River Corridor Commission, work with the Army Corps of Engineers." These are entities you need to, the Ecology School, to their credit, they don't own Simpson Road, they don't own Route 112. It's challenging to do an off-site improvement. They have to work with other entities. We would be one of those entities. So yes, if you walk through some of the timeline of events, I don't think it's something that you can really digest to arrive at a vote on this this evening. I'm happy to get into as many details as you want, but you know, the project was approved in June of 2018. The turn lane only came about through their traffic engineer once some programming and traffic numbers were reconciled in the final, that only came to the city four or five days before final approval of the project. So there certainly were no discussions of who was going to pay for it and where the money was going to come from and what program it was going to run through. Later on, you know, construction began at the end of October of 2019 on the site. As site construction was moving forward, city staff reached out and said, like, what about the off-site improvement? What about the turn lane? You know, were the details, was it going to be, did it have to be constructed prior to a single occupancy of the Ecology School? I mean, all of those things were kind of left because it was a late, you know, a late approval of the project. So there were subsequent meetings on that. They have, the Ecology School went back to the Planning Board, and that brings you all the way forward to November 3 of 2020 is when they got the extension. Again, with the Planning Board, there was no talk of, during that extension, to get the turning lane constructed, there was no talk of the city, you know, no city funding has been allocated over the last two or three budget cycles that this project has been going. There simply has been no official contribution of city funds to this. So the Planning Board, I think the original request was to go out to 2023. The Planning Board, after discussion, said they wanted commencement of construction of the left-turn lane by May 1, 2022. In the meantime, there were supposed to be some counts done at the site. Those were done this summer by a third-party traffic engineer. You know, those results show a mixture of some events at the Ecology School stay below the threshold to require a turn lane, and some don't. Throughout this process, there are other avenues of exploring programming, you know, change the programming to stay below the thresholds to require a turn lane, or maximize the use of the campus, move forward and build the turn lane so that you don't have to put those restrictions on your programming in the long term. And I think that's, if the city is going to be a party to the construction and implementation of that, then that's something you need to, you know, flesh out and address yourself. And the only other thing referenced last week was that the city had to be on board for the main Department of Transportation to review the final design of this project. That's, it depends on which path you're taking. There is a developer-state agreement. So back in February of 2020, a developer-state agreement could be signed by the Ecology School with $5,000, and main Department of Transportation could have evaluated their design and finalized their requirements or recommendations. At that time, the Ecology School was also pursuing, hopefully, some program with state or municipal funding mechanisms. So if they had entered into that developer-state agreement, then it would have eliminated some of those other potential funding streams that they were working on. So I can understand why perhaps the applicant didn't sign that, but there was a way to have the design reviewed. It didn't require the city to be a party and applicant and cost contributor to the project at that time. So there's a lot of, like I said, it was approved in 2018. I am not privy to every piece of information on it, but those are some key dates and timelines and financial commitment statements that I felt that you needed to hear to make an informed decision on this project. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Hatch, did that answer your question?
It sure did, and I appreciate the clarity. Thank you.
Director Clovet, anything to add?
Just real quickly on the clarity on the BPI grant proposal. The city currently has a BPI right now with Hancock Lumber and with the city of Saco and Main Department of Transportation. BPI is a three-way partnership of 33% per person, or 33.333, if you want to do the math. So long story short, so that's what they're applying for, and I have had a conversation as recently as, like, two hours ago with the main state traffic engineer for MDOT. There are heavy-duty requirements, and most of the BPI is geared toward business development, economic development, creating a lot of jobs, and solving problems on state roadways that would not otherwise be able to be resolved with the limited state funding or limited local funding and limited business funding for improvements. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be discussed before this application gets turned in, and just so that you will know that in order for the Ecology School or any other business or entity or organization in the city of Saco that would want to apply for BPI, it has to be done by staff. It has to be done by the city of Saco. The business cannot be the applicant, neither can MDOT. It has to be the city of Saco, and we have to manage the project. And so I just wanted you folks to be aware that should this come forward, that there are qualification requirements, and that the city will have to be the applicant, and that our department would have to manage that. So I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thank you. Any further questions for Pat or Director Clovet? Counselor Johnston, you have a question?
Not a question. Comment, but.
Did you want to?
I mean, if anybody has questions, they can go ahead.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to follow up on the left-turn lane, and I know it was, Director Fox talked about it not being on the city's radar prior to the Ecology School going in. I guess if we could just, if I could just hear a little bit more about that, and what the state of the road is and left turns there, and how the city viewed that intersection prior to the Ecology School. I mean, and I guess the reason for my question is, I'm looking at the traffic study the Ecology School presented, and most of the time they're between 2 and 10 cars per hour, which doesn't seem like a lot of traffic. And I'm aware that, you know, the bridge was down for a few years before that, so there was very little traffic on that road. But prior to that, I understand it was also a busy road and a busy intersection. So I'm wondering if you can just clarify your comments and how the city viewed that.
I can. I am not going to pretend to be able to completely accurately depict every number related to the traffic engineers for the city and the Ecology School that went back and forth over this issue several years ago. All I can say is, on the DOT website, you can click on any road segment and see how many cars use that road. I don't, I did look, I think Simpson Road was at like 600 vehicles per day. This updated traffic study that led to the left-turn lane warrant, I will just say, the traffic study updated, was updated based upon 200 maximum campers versus 120 of their original study. So if you take 200 campers, if you look through the traffic data and you get to 50 peak-hour arrival trips and 40 departure trips for the combined fall-spring peak trip programs, if you get into 50 to 100 that could arrive in bulk, like, similar timeframes, then clearly your numbers of queuing up and turning traffic on Route 112 go up far more than the general use of the street at 650 vehicles. I mean, to put in perspective, Garfield Street before we cut off the left turns there because of safety issue, I mean, that was getting 6,000 cars. So it's not one of our most heavily-used roadways, but the fact is, when you start putting a use in that groups trips together, and that's why traffic diversion and programmatic changes and all of that stuff were explored and talked about a lot during that traffic discussion. So if you take 100 cars and add them to a street that only has 650, that's a significant change. If you took 100 and added them to something that has 10,000 or 20,000, probably not significant. But so I think, I mean, again, I just think it's hard to arrive at a final decision on this if you choose to participate tonight, because there's a lot of deep dives that could be done back into some of the data points that support a lot of this stuff. But the fact is, it was those updated numbers that pushed it over that threshold of requiring a turn lane. So if you took the contract zone and the U side of play and looked at Simpson Road, just like some other left turns within the city at lower volumes off of 112 or any other state road, they're not all going to have turn lanes, and our focus has been to address the commuter and traffic issues from the middle school in. Our traffic studies have looked out as far as Loudon Road, and I would say without this project, I cannot, I safely can say that with the next 10 or 20 years, we were not going to look at a turn lane as a city initiative. Would the state have maybe someday put one in during a reconstruction? Possibly. They did at Loudon Road, and they did at 117, but those are much, much more highly-used roads. I don't, hopefully that addresses that it just wasn't part of a city. There are certain improvements we target and work towards, and as you can see with other 112 improvements, they take sometimes decades to come to fruition. This was not one that was requested by the city or on the city radar to add, to try to add to this project.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Archer.
I just have more of a question on the one reading. If we are, if we vote to actually spend funds, has this actually come, this wasn't prepared in your budget, so it's technically a budget amendment, so I would have to go.
So you're not voting on spending funds tonight?
I.
You're just voting on starting, giving the city administrator the ability to start the process, but then it would come back to you for a final reading once it's, once it goes through its process?
Okay.
So you're not expending any dollars today?
Okay.
Although I'm sure there's an expectation that when it comes back to you, that you would support it, but you know, that's not what you're voting on tonight. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you. I certainly don't have any problem with the city administrator exploring possibilities, but yeah, at this point, I'm certainly not willing to commit to what could be about $150,000 in funds that haven't been allocated. But I am definitely in favor of exploring the possibilities and seeing what's available out there.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. I appreciate, you know, city staff coming forward and giving us some of the past history. I think it kind of summarized what I was pinpointing last meeting when I was, you know, kind of taken off-guard that this was on the agenda the way it was. You know, I think that ultimately, you know, this is a policy call for council, and I know I, for one hand, kind of have concern about the ripple effect, given this situation in comparison to other situations we may have used this process for. You know, as I stated last week, I think it was always understood, from my perspective anyway, that these, this turning lane was going to be financially borne by the Ecology School. I, but at the same time, I can understand, well, based on the language, how, you know, perhaps it can be perceived differently. But having been at those meetings and having listened to the Planning Board and city staff, I think it, at least to me, seemed clear that that was the intent. So again, it's concerning to me that, you know, going all the way back to the initial approval of this contract zone, you know, I had concerns about the future of that road, where shoulder's going to be needed, you know, is drainage going to be an issue in the future? Will sidewalks be requested, given the use of the school in an area that's largely been really extremely rural in context of Saco? So those were always, you know, in the back of my mind with future costs to the city. And so here we are with, you know, a request to participate in something that I had always thought was going to be, you know, borne by the developer. So again, I think, you know, from a council standpoint, we have to be cautious about setting that precedent where the next developer comes along and refers back to this particular agreement and say, well, that's why you should participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Berman?
Just to add, that one of the advantages of the Business Partnership Initiative, as I understand it, is it'll bring 50% or maybe only 33% of the funding from the state. That's a lot of money that would be silly to leave on the table and not at least explore. In addition, although I understand we may be looking at up to 100 cars as part of their site plan approval and their program planning, that would occur really relatively sporadically. You know, the numbers that we represented with are 10, or seven, or two, or a maximum of 30, which suggests that at least some of the traffic issues aren't being created by the Ecology School, but are pre-existing or created by other situations, likely the bridge reconstruction. And for the city to bear some of those costs seems reasonable. So it appears to me that what we're being asked to do right now is simply to authorize the city administrator to explore whether the BPI project is a fit and whether this project would qualify. It would seem silly to leave that potential funding mechanism to the side and forego that state funding.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor McPhail, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, one of my biggest concerns that came up with the last meeting and the presentation was finding, this is coming to us five months before the completion date that the Planning Board set of May, which of course also runs right to the end of our budget season. I agree with Counselor Johnston in the fact that I think that the wording of the original contract zone was implied that the funding be bared by the Ecology School, and I think that is part of the issue that we've been running into recently with our contract zones. And the exceptions to the rules kind of things that have been coming along in the past few months or six to nine months. But again, this was approved by the Planning Board a year ago, and it's coming to us five months before the completion. That Drew had confirmed that that date was the completion date, not a start of or initiated. But I do also feel that, you know, the process of allowing city administrator Kenrath to at least open it up for discussion, bringing it to us also, is kind of, you know, could that be warranted? Again, having a final decision when that is presented. So I mean, I do have my concerns as well.
I was just, I'm curious, is it an extension? I assume that's possible, probably back through the Planning Board process. So there's that aspect of it. I guess my. I guess my concern is we just heard two staff members describe that, you know, it's going to be staff time involved in pursuing this. So I don't know how much time we want to put or, you know, work additional workload we want to put on their hands to pursue something that, and I could, I mean, Ms. Clavett's there, she could correct me, but I, it seemed as though this is for a business, and I take that as a for-profit business. So are we basically giving them a task that is probably likely not going to be achievable to begin with? And that's a question for everybody else, I guess. I just, I mean, I think if we're going to do it at all, then it makes sense to give them or get them the extension so that they don't meet that time commitment, given the 2023 that they originally were seeking, and then find out if we can even do this based on, you know, the parameters that the state has set. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 5-2. Item B, which was tabled on November 8, 2021, it was a final reading amendment to zoning uses and definitions. Is there a motion to remove the item from the table?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy to remove the item from the table. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call, vote to remove the item from the table. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to remove the item from the table. So now the item is open, and I think there was an amendment that was made by Counselor Archer and seconded by Counselor Purdy at the November 8 meeting. Counselor Archer, do you remember the amendment off the top of your head or with your iPad? And that is adding contractor or tradesperson as a permitted use, food and drink as a conditional use, and personal services as a conditional use in the B1 zoning districts. Is that correct? Thank you. And Counselor Purdy, you're still good with the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion on the amendment? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I think I made several points last time when this was first brought up, but I guess, you know, I think it's important, as former Mayor Pilon stated earlier, this zone used to be the I-2. It's now been merged with two other zones. I think in the past, and as early passes a year ago, the thinking of this zone was that it would stay fairly harmonious and most of those industrial uses would remain. I felt there was pretty significant dialogue over the years about the food being added. I, for whatever reason, I mean, last week, the applicant decided to make this personal, which for me, it's never been. I look at this particular corridor, well, let's speak to the actual request here, which was done by a petitioner. Petitioner is really just interested in their own property. But in particular, we're talking about the entire zone. That's the issue I have. Specific to the petitioner's property, I actually don't have any, or I don't see, I think as the planner said, it's debatable whether it's appropriate there. Going back to the zoning revision process, I did hear speakers like former Mayor Pilon and Linda Valentino ask for the food. And again, I thought it was debatable, but I also thought there was merit to it. Again, the committee ultimately, you know, decided against adding those. But I also looked at that corridor specifically, the industrial park road. If we were to make a map change and have that be the transition zone that allowed food, I think that's doable. The issue remains for me that we're talking about the entirety of what was the I-2, which is, for decades, has been spelled out for industrialized use and commercial use. Not a restaurant, not, you know, a sandwich shop or Dunkin' Donuts. I don't think it's the highest and best use of that significant acreage that lies, you know, to the north of the industrial park road itself. You know, those properties that front on the industrial park. That, and again, you just look at the map, there's significant acreage there. So, you know, if council's going to move forward with this, you know, so be it. Again, as I stated, was never really so much my issue. It was about the totality of the zone. I would hope and think that the city, the council at a later date should take up, you know, what I just suggested, which is a map change that creates a zone that does allow this use and not open up, you know, the entirety of the BI, as it's called now, to these uses. And if we are going to do it, I think, again, we should look at doing master plan development for that area. I just, I mean, I think all of us have been, again, I'm not picking on anybody from the state of Massachusetts or states similar to like, you know, to Mass, but I think all of us have been areas where the zoning is very hodgepodge and there's no harmony to it. It doesn't, it doesn't flow well, and I think that's what happens when you do kind of one-off zoning like this for just an individual lot, which is really what we're seeking here, and instead of taking a more holistic approach to this. So, I mean, as far as that, I mean, that's where I am with this. And again, if council's going to move forward, as suggested, I think, or I would request that we come back and view this from a map change or including master plan development in that zone and requiring that for these uses. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Garnum, could you come forward, please? Thank you, sir. Just for definitions for purposes of everyone here, permitted use is strictly permitted. It's allowed, correct?
Correct.
And a conditional use means it's conditioned on something, correct?
Correct, and it requires review by the planning board via submittal of a conditional use permit application.
So in the language that has been put forward by adding contractor and tradesperson as a permitted use, contractor and tradesperson would be allowed with no issues, correct?
Yep, correct.
But then food and drink and personal services as a conditional use, meaning it has to have conditions gone through by the planning board and city staff, correct?
Yes, their proposal would have to meet nine criteria for the planning board to approve their application.
So it's not just a general approval of everything that comes forward? There's conditions that have to be met?
That's correct. It's a, it's a look at the specific details and provisions and impacts of a proposal, and then also a means to establish conditions above and beyond the standard development requirements in order for the planning board to approve it.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Director Garnum while he's up here? Counselor Johnston?
Okay, I am fully aware of the difference between being allowed by right and conditional approval. But would you, would you say that as long as those nine criteria are met in a conditional approval, that the planning board has to approve that applicant? Meaning, they can't, they can't come up with some egregious stipulation as long as they meet the nine standards, it's basically an approval?
That's usually what I would recommend as the planner. If a project does, if the applicant can demonstrate that they meet those, I will recommend approval. Whether they do or not is up to them, but of course, a decision that is not based on the criteria and the evidence that is presented is certainly appealable by the applicant.
Any further discussion on this amendment? Questions on the amendment only? Director Garnum, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On the amendment only, roll call. Counselor Archer?
Aye, I would like to see the map changed in the future as well.
Thank you. Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes, or the amendment passes 5-2. That brings us back to the main motion, which has been amended twice, once previously on November 8 and then once here this evening. Any other amendments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment.
Counselor McPhail?
I would like to add, all said zoning amendments are to be applied retroactively back to January 11, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Discussion on the amendment? Hearing no discussion on the amendment. Roll call, vote on the amendment? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 4-3. That brings us back to the main motion now amended three times, once on November 8, twice here this evening. On the main motion, any further amendments? On the main motion as amended? Counselor Johnston?
Not an amendment. I just, while reviewing this, something caught my eye, and I want to make sure that council is aware of it. So when we go back to the uses that we've had or we're adding, we're adding medical marijuana and registered dispensaries to be permitted in the BI and the I-zone. Is that the way everybody else understands it? Correct me if I'm wrong, I just reviewed a lot of paper. So again, when we go back to the previous ordinance, that was four different zones previously. There are now two zones. Previously, the I-3, which was Millbrook, did not allow any marijuana use. The way I am interpreting this, we're now adding that back or adding it to that zone, and I don't know if that was the intent of council. If it is, so be it. I just wanted to make sure that that's, comes forward along with what used to be the B-8, which is the parcels across from what used to be the DPW garage, which is a hotel. I don't remember which hotel, but the hotel area. So we're now adding those uses to that area. So it's that. And again, if council's fine with that, that's fine by me. But if not, I would just suggest that, as I did several weeks ago, we amend both Spring Hill and the Millbrook Business Park covenants to forebode those uses like we just did with the Philip Springs covenants. So, that is all.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Roll call, vote on the main motion as amended. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston? Motion passes 7-0. There is no new business this evening. City Administrator Ken Rath, do you have an administrative update?
Just one quick update, Mr. Mayor. Another bid opportunity to announce. The City of Saco is soliciting bids from qualified vendors for the conversion of a new supply by the city, 2022 Chevy Tahoe into an emergency response vehicle. Work will include, but not limited to, the installation of emergency audible and visual warning devices, forward console, rear command cabinet, radios, antennas, exterior graphics, and lettering and other associated equipment in accordance with the attached specification. All bids must be submitted on the bid response form in a sealed envelope marked "Bid Fire Command Vehicle Conversion", and bids will be accepted until 1:00 p.m. on December 22 at the Saco Public Works Department. Any questions regarding this bid opportunity should be directed to Deputy Fire Chief Robert Martin at rmartin@socamain.org, or you may telephone him at 207-282-3244. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for City Administrator Ken Rath? Okay, moving on to item 12, council discussion in common. Any council discussion in common this evening? Just a reminder, folks, the Parade of Lights is this week, on Thursday, the 4th, so please come on down and take a look at many of the floats that will be in the parade. We have in the audience direct, oh, Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday. Thank you for that correction. Would have been real bad if everyone was showing up on Thursday evening. So Saturday, come on down to the Parade of Lights. With that, there's no executive session. Item 14, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second? Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to adjourn. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston? Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 7:16 p.m. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.